The regular council meeting for January seventeenth, twenty twenty two to order at seven oh two P M. I would like to recognize that we are on three D five land and we are all pretty people. Thank you very much. I would like to have an approval of the agenda.
Question on America, ma'am. So the hearing lease of our land near the seaplane base that's been tabled, expected to have been brought back on their earlier meeting council. Is there any way I can find out when this is going to be brought to council because it certainly cost the data was supposed to come to us?
I do believe, go to Anthony, but I do believe that we're waiting on some information. Anthony?
Yeah, there was, as you pointed out, counsel, there was a number of environmental issues there for us to pursue. We're still looking into those, so we don't have a proper answer for you to bring forward for that or for that lease. Then it could at least be adapted to include some of the issues that you brought up.
In addition to that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to table item number. Discussion regarding. Six. Six point two. Six point one and six point two. Okay. I'd like to table that until the information is.
That is already tabled, so we just wouldn't have a motion to lift it from the table. Right now it's tabled, so you just wouldn't have, you wouldn't have the motion to lift it.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to do with this work for it.
Okay, so. Brian?
All second motion to.
We have to, very normal, right?
No, it's already tabled. Yeah, it's already tabled. You don't need it to do anything.
Okay. Anything else? I'm gonna see your hand up.
No, just wanted to second the motion.
We're going to have to make a motion to bring it back on it and off the table.
Yeah, just to be clear, Madam Mayor, my, my was to remove it from the agenda.
Then you'd need a motion this second, I move on a second minute.
And that's what I was trying to do.
Oh, okay, so.
So I'd like to remove this motion from the agenda.
Totally.
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Jack to remove item six point one, six point two from the agenda. Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor, are all in favor?
Alright.
Oh. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, so can I have an approval of the agenda as amended? Deputy Mayor, remember, Councilwoman, all in favor?
Alright. Alright.
Do we, any community comments, feedbacks? Tammy, do we have anybody on the line that would be able to talk? Nobody register? Okay, thank you. And I would just like to, for the sake of everybody here, we, in the room, we have Counselor Colbert, Deputy Mayor Lamworth, Mayor Smook, Counselor Wong, Counselor Fountain, Casper, Tammy, Administration on the line, we have Counselor Ellsworth, Counselor Prue, Counselor Valentino, Counselor McMurdo, and City Manager Anthony McGinnis. Thank you. Let's go into number five adoption minutes, five point one is a regular meeting of council. For December the thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Resolution two zero two two zero zero one, moved by Counselor Colbert, seconded by Counselor Fountain. It resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, a Monday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty one, we adopted a circulator. Any? Comments from Administration?
Nothing further.
And Council? All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Great. For those on Zoom, Casper is watching for your hands or for your comments. He is a doctor of regular meeting of councils for sixteen, twenty twenty one. Resolution two zero two two zero zero two, moved by Counselor Fountain, seconded by Counselor Colbert. It resolved that the minutes of the special meeting of council held in Council Chamber. Thompson, Manitoba, on Thursday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty one, we adopted a circulator. Any comments from Administration?
Nothing further.
Anything from Council? All for the question, all those in favor?
Alright.
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 Adoption minutes for special regular reading of council, January tenth, twenty twenty two. Resolution two zero two two zero zero three, moved by Counselor Fountain, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lamworth. We have resolved that the minutes of the special meeting of council in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, a Monday, January tenth, twenty twenty two, we adopted a circulator. Administration?
Nothing further.
All for the question, all those in favor?
Alright. Alright.
We are not going into resolution. Resolution six point three is a resolution to rescind resolution two zero two one one seven six provisional estimates. Resolution two zero two zero four, moved by Counselor Wong, seconded by Counselor Colbert. Whereas on December thirteenth, twenty twenty one, council passed resolution number twenty twenty one one seven six, being a resolution to approve twenty twenty two provisional estimates. Whereas on January tenth, twenty twenty two, Counselor Wong submitted a written notice of motion to rescind resolution two zero two one one seven six. Now therefore be it resolved that council rescind resolution number two zero two one one seven six. Administration?
Sure, the provisional estimates are funding the way the council funds the administration to continue running the city until council's budget is passed no later than May fifteenth. Takes what the budget was from the previous year, divides it up by twelve, and then assigns five twelfths or five months of funding to allow the administration to continue to work until council's budget is passed. And really, this is a council, this is a motion brought forward by a member to discuss this with other members of council.
Thank you. Go to Counselor Wong as the mover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to be clear. My motive is very simple. To bring the administration back to the table, discuss with the elected official. So, in my opinion, right now, the city is in limbo. We never had a meeting since, I believe, the end of October with the administration. So I can look, I can see the, of the resolution tonight, we talked about purchase another almost half a million dollars of the equipment. And we never have any input or any suggestion or any discussion. So here we go, and then we're going to spend a half a million dollars without knowing question. So I'm going to ask question anyway. I did reach out to one of my colleagues to say, well, you know what? This is the only way that we have leverage. To get them to back to the table to discuss, and he wasn't disagreeing, and, and he said he might be coming up some better idea. So I would like to hear if he can come up some idea that we don't need to do this. But other than, otherwise, we are giving twenty one million dollars for them to spend without knowing how we go and do it. I still want to go back to what I originally support, suggest about month to month. At least we get an update every month. What are we going to spend for the next following month? Otherwise, I think it's, it's full on my part to agree with getting twenty one million dollars without accountability. And don't forget, we are duty elected, this is our duty to look at all this money spending, how we spend. Plus, we have no meeting. I still don't know what are we allowed to spend? What are they spending? How they spend? How they make a decision? I have zero, zero at all. Unless, Madam Mayor, you have some plan going forward to have them to go back to the, the meeting, the standing committee, so we can have a good discussion. I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but I've been struggling to find a leverage for us to get that engagement. We also reached out to you, Madam Mayor, to see what can we do? And so far, I see nothing. So there's my motive. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And we did send out the notice to see who would be available for, for a meeting this week. And we do have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, especially in camera, to discuss some of the issues around it. Any further comments from other counselors? Councilwoman?
Yeah, me, I got the same feeling here, you know. We should be having meetings, whether I like you or not, it's not whether I like you or I don't like you, I got, you got problems. It's for the benefit of the city, the taxpayers, and we're not having them. Nobody wants to give twenty one million. I voted for it last time. I hate it when I got to do things like this. I'd like to see the city run as efficient as possible. And right now, like I like Counselor Wong said, we don't hear nothing. We don't know nothing. And this is a way that if they want to spend money, well, then they gotta come to the table. Right? And, you know, there's no way is we're going to get this resent here tonight because is three or four of us going with, four of us are going to vote for it, get it for it, five is going to vote again. So we're going to go right back in and there you go, right back to where we were. Thank you.
Any other?
Counselor Ellsworth and Counselor Valentino and Counselor Prue all have their hands raised.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I don't think anyone really wants to resent a provisional estimate. We do understand that, we've discussed it in the last three years, but like my colleagues have stated, I believe we have not been given an opportunity to speak in regards to trying to work with our administration in a proper forum. The last meeting, for anyone that is concerned to know, our last standing committee meeting was October the twenty fifth with the Finance and Legislative Committees. There's been an opera, there's been a number of times where I've brought things which I won't discuss because we're in a regular meeting, but in camera to try to discuss it for the improvement of this city, things that we need to do, we run out of time, we don't get a chance to discuss it. Again, that happened today. I believe that once the, once we do go public, whether eventually, I will make a statement at that time. It's going to cost this city a lot of money if we don't do certain things. And yet, we're asking for provisional estimates that was passed in order to pay to get the administration run our city. Well, not unlike the other counselors, I was elected to govern, and certainly the administration runs the city, but they don't run the mayor and council. That's not why they're there. And at this point, I don't know why we're paying people to run a city, that we have no feedback, no input. We run out of time, we're here tonight again debating stuff that should be debated at a standing committee, and, and not only wasting a lot of our own personal time, but the community time. And I believe it's time for the community of Thompson to speak up and say, we elected you to do a job, do it, and we're trying to do it. But it's a partnership. We cannot do our work, we cannot help the, the administration or give proper direction, and we're not involved in it. And so tonight, I would hope, as the leader, as the mayor of this city, never mind about calling special meetings, that's long overdue. I'm tired of special meetings. It's time, long overdue that you as elected mayor, Madam Mayor, instruct our one employee to get the administration back to working with the elected people, so we can do what we're elected to do, and that's give direction. The worst thing can happen is if we turn around and, and vote this through tonight, that's not what I'm about, that's not where I want to be. But again, that's the only time we got a vice to do anything is right now, right here, and I'm requesting that this can go away, but we need an answer. Is the administration planning on meeting with this mayor and council in the next ten months that we've got left, or we need to do something different? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Valentino?
Thank you, Mayor Smook. Mayor Smook, I'd just like you to remind your counselors that the debate is on the resolution that's before them, not about committee meetings. I will not be supporting this resolution tonight to rescind this resolution. This is a, a resolution that comes forward and it's out of the municipal act, it's not, provisional estimates aren't for a motive or a use of leverage by elected officials. I will not be supporting this because you already into three weeks of January. I'm not sure if council will then have to put stop payment on checks that have been issued or ask for the employees to give their paychecks back. The provisional estimates of five twelfth is part of the municipalities to continue operating. In our discussion process, on the December thirteenth meeting, we as a council said we would, well, we did pass this going forward, asking for the, the monthly updates on the spending from administration. So I am not supporting this resolution to rescind, as I feel it was passed December thirteenth, and it does the city administration, the due diligence of operating the city as it, as we go forward every year, we pass the same resolution, and there's never been anything done wrongly that would give me any indication that I would want to rescind this resolution today. And I do look forward to the special in camera meeting Thursday. Thank you, Mayor Smook.
Thank you. Counselor Prue?
Thank you. Yes, I will agree, it has been very frustrating not having the, the, sorry, the committee meetings. I do look forward to our new structure that we've been working on. I would hope that it moves quite a bit quicker than it has been. I'm not, I don't think the, it's the time to pull the card yet. For such a card as rescinding this, I do think we do need to sit down with the administration and discuss what needs to be discussed and move forward in a positive manner. Thank you.
Counselor Fountain, have I seen your hand up?
I don't know.
You were sort of, yes, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, Don Flanagan also has his hand up. I'm going to support the resolution to rescind the, the resolution from last council meeting. We met with government officials a couple of months back, and we discussed fiduciary responsibility. I agree with many counselors who've indicated that this process creating a provisional estimate to make it through the first months, it's not, it's not the first time we've seen this. It's a normal routine. However, what's not normal is we're not meeting. And when we're not meeting, we're not able to meet that fiduciary duty. For me, that's an important thing. When you sign up as a counselor, that's one of your duties. I, I would hope that my fellow counselors realize that they have a responsibility there. Up and above that, the fact that we're not meeting is we're dealing with a bigger budget than normal, a significantly bigger budget than normal, with a significant amount of work that needs to go off without a hitch efficiently in order to get the best bang for that dollar. It's an unprecedented time, I believe, for construction in Thompson. And kudos to council and those who lobbied to get the ISIP grant so that we can work. But we're in a position now where a number of us feel like we're not able to, to do our responsible or are not able to live up to our responsibilities in planning, getting information. So that's what's different. That's what's changed. It's not that a problem with provisional agreements and estimates. The problem is, we're not meeting and we're not able to meet our responsibilities. So, and for that matter, I won't be, sorry, I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Prudential, are you unmuted?
Oh, sorry, I'm, the audio kicked out. Yeah, first I wanted to note that I think the back truck's going to be run about three hundred and forty thousand after the insurance, not the five hundred thousand. And then, then I would say that I do sympathize with, with the frustration of council and, and disagree with the way that the meetings, committee meetings were discontinued. But I think that council needs to remain cognizant and the public needs to be aware that, that the discord at present can be attributed to behavior from, from definitely both sides. So I, I, I think we, we need to remain that, you know, we, we played a role in this as well, at least in my opinion. So at this juncture, I don't think they're putting the city in a position where it can't pay its bills and rescinding the provisional estimates is, is the way, the sensible way to proceed. But my fellow counselors are right that these meetings need to resume as, as quickly as possible, and hopefully with Thursday's meeting, we, we get some movement forward.
My privilege, Madam Mayor. That's my privilege of clarification. No one here in this resolution to hold the resolution for last meeting isn't calling for us not paying our bills. It's to pull it so that we can go to monthly, to monthly provisional bundles as opposed to the six months or five months that we've done. No one here is advocating that we pull all funding off of the table until this issue is dealt with.
No, but if we don't pass provisional estimates, and this is based on January the tenth, we haven't given any, we haven't had a resolution to pay anything, so we would basically have to stop payment until we met as a council to actually even approve the first month's provisional estimate, because we wouldn't have any provisional estimate out there. Am I wrong, Anthony?
The provisional estimates, if, if this resolution were to pass and there was nothing else in its place, the City Hall would have to close tomorrow until there was a way to, to pay to keep the doors open.
Thank you. Constable White?
Yeah. Tough, tough. City Hall is going to close if we don't pass this bill. Counselor Valentino said, talked about, the council is all in its hostage over this. Right? We're not all nobody hostage. We got elected because we thought we could make change in this city. And change, it, it happened. A lot of change happened, and mostly it's for the bad. And now, here tonight, we're talking about money that the city needs to move forward. I don't want the city to shut down. I don't think it would shut down because we're willing to make a provision tonight if we, for monthly money. So it's not going to shut down. Now, that's all not hostage, saying we got to pass it. You know, if, if, if we don't, if we don't pass, if we shut it down, we're not, we're not, we're going to close down tomorrow. Now, isn't that kind of all the mess hostage too? Right? You know, wanting people to say yes, so we don't shut down. I've come into this council for change and transparency. And right now, we're not getting none of this situation, none. And, you know, I can't support this right now, unless we get confirmation from our administration that we are going to have meetings, right? And if we turn this down to them, that you support this motion, we will definitely get their attention. Because if we turn it down, and according to our city administrator, no job tomorrow morning, no job, right? So, you know, where are we? Stuck. We tried, like I said, we got, we kind of made a change and transfer. We sure did. We got our change and no transparency. Our change went to the works. Thank you, your.
Thank you.
Counselor Valentino and Counselor McMurdo up there.
You don't know which.
Kathy and then Kathy.
Okay, Counselor Valentino?
Thank you, Mayor Smook. Just for clarification, for the minutes, I'd like it noted I never did say the words hold hostage. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McMurdo?
Um, yeah, thanks, Mayor Smook. I was, I just got distracted. Sorry, my, my comment is kind of slipped me at this time. I was hoping it would come back. My apologies.
Thank you.
Counselor Prue?
Counselor Prue?
Yeah, so the problem is, is there is no, nothing to fill into monthly, it's just to rescind it. So it's just to remove it, and that, that'd be it, that's it. So there's nothing, no other resolution in place on today's agenda to feeling to go to a monthly provisional estimate is the problem.
Thank you.
Can I jump in? Excuse me, Mayor Smook, it, it did come to me.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Okay, if I could direct to admin, if, if, if we fail to, to, to support, to pass the resolution to rescind tonight, is there further opportunities to make such a motion by council to rescind this provisional estimate if we find ourselves in this position a month from now?
A resolution to rescind can only be brought once on any particular resolution that's per the Minnesota Act.
Okay, thanks for the clarification and procedure.
Counselor Prue, did you put your hand up again?
No, sorry.
Thank you. Look back. Oh, Counselor Wong, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After I listened to some of my colleagues and the administration explain about this provisional estimation, I think some of the, some of the information is not correct. When you go to read the municipal act, they say you allow, you're allowed to do this. It doesn't mean you can, you will shut down the City Hall. The fear mongol technique is always worked in the world, even the COVID nineteen. So anyway, what I'm trying to say is like, all you, everything, every money that we spend is go by resolution to prove it. Same as the budget, you got to go with the resolution to approve it. So now, the way that I want to do is like, if you need to pay a bill, if you don't have the provisional budget approved, you just have to bring the amount with the resolution every time. I know it's not easy. I'm not signed up for easy job. I'm signed up for the hard job. It's my second term. Sometimes I'm sick of it, you know? I'm doing the same thing. I'm not here for rubber stamping, Madam Mayor. You know, the way that sometime I hear all my colleagues saying, oh, you're going to shut down, we're going to do this, and we have to give it to them, otherwise shut down. No such thing you could shut down. Unless you don't understand governing process, governing ideology, how you do things. So I'm not here for rubber stamping, and also sometimes it's tough. I know it's tough. It's, it's not an easy job to do this. But so far, I have no clue where's the leverage that we can get them back to the table to discuss all the money that they're willing to spend, how they're going to spend. Do we have input into how they spend? Where is a good idea to spend or bad idea to spend? There's no alternative right now, because we just gave them a twenty one million dollar blank check so they can continue to do what they need to do, or whatever they do without accountability. So the, one of the, another biggest concern I have is normally we take about six to seven months of budget process. We are short of two and a half months now. So by May, we got to get approved. So let me guess, by the time if you don't have any meeting to discuss any money, they're going to say time sensitive. We need to prove it, otherwise the whole year will shut down, Madam Mayor. So we get scared again. So I don't know. I don't have any plan in front of me. I don't know what I have to do later on. So I try to do as much as I could as elected official. I'm only, I'm only eleven percent. And I, I need, I need some of the council to support, but so far, I see, I don't have enough there. But with that, I'm not going to jack further. I'll ask for a recordable. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other concert, fast comment?
Counselor Ellsworth has to stand up.
Counselor Ellsworth?
I'm not going to take a lot of time, Madam Mayor. We've discussed this subject at length now, but I want to make it very clear. On one end, we say we would shut down the city, but the last time I checked, any invoices normally that we get from business or anyone else is thirty, sixty, ninety days. Payrolls are normally every two weeks, some is week. As Counselor Wong very clearly put it, yes, it would be a little bit unwilly, but certainly we could still run bringing every resolution forward to pay whatever we need to pay. So. uh, resolution forward to pay whatever we need to pay. So I don't want the public to be misled that if we turn this down tonight, uh, that, uh, we would have to shut city all down. I don't think that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I, I won't be supporting this. No surprise, uh, the provisional estimates are regular, regularly used by any form of government, federal, provincial, city. We will be hopefully soon working on our budget. This is just allowing our staff, our administration to move forward with regular day-to-day business. Large ticket items will still come forward plus. Find where we're going here and.
Thank you.
You know, I'd like to comment here. He said, the counsel, W. Mayor, uh, Mark said that it's a day-to-day business, but it's not day-to-day business because we're not meeting committee ones. So how can it be the day-to-day business? It's not routine. It's routine to offer them the 21 million, but it's not routine to not have our committee meetings. So there's the problem with, with anything. Is they, we're gonna spend money, no matter what we say or admit. We're still gonna spend money. And, but we're not getting the meetings in the right way. How many times have we been told in this chamber? Oh, you wanna ask questions, come to committee meetings. Right? How many times have you been told that in this council? And now we can't do it. We're trying to find some way to get back to work. Like Counselor McMurdo said, we're all blame. We're all blame. Not only us administration too. So we're all blame. But we still got the city of Thompson to take care of, taxpayers to take care of, and we want transparency and fairness. Right? That's all I want. Fairness. It's fair for me. You know, this is the first time in two years, I took maybe a silence, and then I got shut down right away. See? You know? Then I got a city here and see all this stuff come forward with no debate. No debate. And I was told many a time during three years, go to your committee meetings, ask your questions there. No question. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we'll call for the question. All those in, in a recorded vote as per Counselor Wong, all those in favor of this resolution?
Aye.
Counselor Fountain, Counselor Wong, Counselor Colburn, Counselor Elsor, opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Valentino, Counselor McMurdo, and Counselor Prue. This is Peter. Thank you. 6.4 is a resolution to appoint a municipal noxious weed inspector. Resolution 2022 006, moved by Deputy Mayor Landmark, accepted by Counselor Colburn. Whereas all municipalities as defined by the municipal act are subject to and governed by the Noxious Weeds Act. And whereas the city of Thompson is required to approve a municipal weed inspector by March 1st, 2022, and submit the name of the individual within one week of the appointment according to section 11 of the Noxious Weeds Act. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw inspector be named as the city of Thompson Municipal Noxious Noxious Weeds Inspector. Administration?
Uh, yes, as noted, this is a requirement of the Noxious Weeds Act. It's a strange one because it's really tailored, if you read the act, for agricultural areas of southern Manitoba, but the way the act is written as one of the oldest acts in the province is that every municipality must submit the name. Uh, and it's, it's required to be done yearly. Traditionally, our bylaw inspector does this. We have a new bylaw inspector at the moment, and we're seeking any training possible for that position. Uh, but we're also gonna have discussions with the department on whether we should be looking for an exemption for this in our municipality, because, um, we're not even included on the noxious weeds map of the province. Uh, the areas of concern are all south of us, so we having separate discussions on that, but in the interim, we're required to pass a resolution appointing someone to this position.
Thank you. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Wong?
I'm not sure who we're, uh, assigning this task to. Uh, didn't see it in the memo.
The position is assigned, it's assigned to the position. So whoever's in that position then becomes the inspector.
Yeah, thank you. And I realize this is just a housekeeping item to make sure that we have something according to, um, uh, legislation.
Thank you. Any other cons for, for this, cons for problem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, I'm well aware that this is, uh, to protect agricultural land versus weeds that can take over a field. Not much use here is, uh, our CAO has indicated. I certainly agree with that. Um, I would hope that we never enforce this, given that the purpose of it was to protect agricultural land. Frankly, uh, I'm only one of three farm owners here, and I, I'm not worried about this at all, frankly. The more weed I can get on my properties, the better, frankly, but, um. As a housekeeping, I'll, I'll be supporting it, but I, I wanna be on record as saying, I hope that this never gets enforced. Especially since there's no need for it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cons for? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Counselor McMurdo may have lined out.
Okay. Carried.
Uh, yeah, it's back in. Um, I'm in support of it. Thanks.
6.5 is a resolution to approve the tabulation of price, of prices for the purchase of a hydro. Resolution 200, 2022 006, moved by Counselor Wong, seconded by Counselor Fountain. Be it resolved that council approved the recommendation of the purchasing agent award the purchase of the hydro back to Joey Johnson for their tender price of $513,500 plus applicable taxes as per tender file number 13121. And be it further resolved that the purchase of the hydro back is funded from the utility reserve. Administrator?
Uh, yes, uh, this is a piece of equipment that is used very heavily at the city. Um, several months ago was damaged in an incident. And, um, in the interim, the city has been leasing or renting a unit uh, and then tendered out for a replacement of this unit. Uh, and it's noted that the unit is paid for through the utility, as that's where the majority of the work of it is done from. And so the recommendations attached through the purchasing agent, along with a memo from the Director of Public Works.
Thank you. Counselor Wong, as a mover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I have a few questions. Because I didn't get a chance to ask at the committee level, so now I have to use this opportunity. Question number one, when we leased this piece of equipment, was it new or used?
My understanding is that this is a new piece of equipment.
Okay, what was the mileage or hour on the machine at that time before we see?
I wouldn't have that. Our mechanics would know that.
And what is the hour and, uh, mileage today?
I wouldn't have that either. It's used on as needed basis.
I think that's a very crucial, you know why? Because if we know the hours, first we can, we can be determining the, uh, the usage of throughout the five months, how important this piece of machine. Number two, so right now we're talking about two things. When you lease a machine, now we decide to buy. So it's considered used. So did we explore what is the value of used equipment at this particular model and the mileage? What will we want at this time? Do we have that study?
I don't understand your question.
We consider this is considered a used machine now. We are gonna take over. Okay, so we signed a lease agreement to begin with. So now we're supposed to return this machine. Now we're looking to buy a new machine. But they're trying to convince to buy this off them, but it's considered a used machine. Now, so what is the value of this particular machine at this time? It's worth it. It's worth.
The value is what they're offering, and if we accept it. So it's a tender which allows people to submit their prices. And in their prices, I believe they built in a discount factor based on its usage. And then it's up to council to decide if they wanna purchase that or not. But as a tender, then it's a transparent process where anyone could put their bid in anyhow they like, and they could have a look at it and see if it meets the criteria or not, then approve it or not approve it.
Uh, yeah, I do believe there was, uh, uh, the new price, what it would have been, and then the price as what it is. Plus, there was also a credit on some of the rental time was included in this agreement.
No, no, this is not what my question is. I'm not talking about, I'm talking about if you go out and buy the same mileage of the machine, of this machine being used, what will we cost us to buy as a used machine?
We don't price the machines that way. We put them out for tender. So the, the method that people can then bid on it is through a tender. So we don't go in and price out used machines because it wasn't spec for that. It was spec as this is the kind of machine that we want. Anyone who has a company can put forward and, uh, offer a machine that we can consider for purchase.
I think you misunderstand. How is that work? Because you lease with them. So now the, the machine's supposed to return to them when we decide to buy a new one. So instead of buying a new one, they just say, hey, why do you take this? We give you $30,000 off. So what I wanna compare is if you're gonna go out and buy a used machine, which is the same one that, uh, they try to sell it to us, what would it cost in the market? We don't have that information. So how is it fair for me to say, yeah, we agreed 500 and some thousand dollars to take over the old machine? Because we did sign an agreement with lease to own to begin with. So have the administration go out and find out if the same kind of machine with the same mileage, what will it worth in the market right now?
I don't have that, but as I said, it was put out as a tender which allows anyone to put in their price. So this company has decided to put in their price based on the machine they'd already previously leased to us. They could have put for something else, and other companies could have made offers as well.
It does say in our memo that, uh, the, the insured value of it is $575,000.
Because, Madam Mayor, when you go online, you look at the used machine, there's a lot of different prices. You can get something for $300,000. Number one. Number two, we don't even know what the engine is. Right? There's different make with a different value. I don't know what this engine is. What is horsepower? Is it worth it for 500 some thousand dollars for this used machine? Okay, number two, we don't have the mileage. When you say daily, very important every day, we don't have anything to prove that there's a very important everyday use it. There's no mileage to indicate, tell me. Because when it comes to heavy equipment, I think I have a lot of knowledge compared to some of them. So I'd like to know all that information before, before we decide to spend half a million dollars. I'm not saying it's not important, but it's, there's no information for me to look at it.
There was opportunity, if you read this, Brian, you could have maybe asked.
There is nothing. This is genetic.
Thank you. Uh, cons for problem?
Yeah, for administration, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's always good to purchase a piece of equipment instead of lease it, so I, I don't wanna mix words there, but, when we put this out for tenders, did we specify that the machine had to be new? I'm assuming that the answer is no, based on what I'm hearing, which to me seems to be a bit of an oversight or a not way to have done that.
I'll have to verify that. I believe we've often put out for new or sometimes we put out for equivalent, so sometimes it could be a 2022, 2020, or 2021. It's, it's really how the, the mechanics in the department spec it out, out of how they want it. So normally the operators are consulted, along with, uh, mechanics and the directors of the department.
Uh, obviously, that's there is a difference between a 2020 machine and a 2022 machine. That's clear. I mean, it's two years different. Uh, the hours may be quite racked up on a 2020 machine. I, I don't know. But that would seem to be a pretty big oversight here. Uh, just to me, I'm, I'm not a a huge knowledge, I don't have a lot of knowledge about heavy equipment, but to me, it sounds like, uh, that's, uh, that's a bit odd. Thank you. And if I can call for a recorded vote on this one.
Okay.
Uh, Counselor Ellsworth, have his hand up. And then Counselor McMurdo.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Uh, certainly, this is a very important piece of equipment. I remember when we were having standing committee meetings where we discussed this equipment, we discussed about possibly purchasing a piece of equipment when MPI piece was looked after. In the meantime, we rented this piece of equipment that we're talking about through a lease. Um, I did read the notes, can't bring them up because I'm on Zoom right now. But, uh, I'm not against, um, getting the hydro back, but this is point in case again where if we were having our standing committee meetings, these questions that is being asked tonight would either be answered at that meeting, or we would receive an email to all of council giving us the answers to the question so we can make an informed decision when we get to the regular, uh, council meeting. Uh, Counselor Colburn spoke to this earlier, and, 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 and I must agree that throughout the last three years, there was many counselors that was chastised in regular council meetings because they didn't ask questions or didn't go to regular, uh, standing committee meetings. And here tonight, we find ourselves at a regular, uh, council meeting debating a resolution to buy a very piece, important piece of equipment uh, for our city that's needed. As the, uh, manager of the city says, it's a piece of equipment that is well-used. But at the same time, we have no idea how many hours is on this equipment. We don't know how, uh, if, if it got beaten up a bit. What is the real true cost of it? Uh, in saying all of that, I, I still will have to support the hydro back truck as we need it, and I'm tired of seeing $12,000 a month being paid out in lease. But again, in closing, it's another reason, a very important reason why we need to get back on track with administration and have our meetings so we can discuss those types of issues and have the answers to, in order to make an informed uh, decision when we get to the regular council on behalf of the taxpayers of the city of Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McMurdo?
Uh, just before Counselor McMurdo starts, it looks like Counselor Prue has dropped out. A long gone after, first later.
Okay. So he's out right now?
He's out now, but it's, I'm not sure if he's.
Okay, uh, so Counselor Prue has left us, possibly temporary with, uh, the way our internet works. Uh, we'll go next to Counselor McMurdo.
Um, yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, but when I look at it, it looks like a pretty reasonable purchase agreement, but, um, I'm, I'm, I'm limited there, and it's, it's, you know, I'm not an expert when it comes to these matters. And I think that Counselor Wong did bring up that two good questions um, with regard to the hours and mileage when that piece of equipment showed up and, and what they are now. So rather than bring it to a vote with incomplete information in light of the fact that we haven't met in committee, as counselors have pointed out, um, is there any way to table this for two weeks to get that information without incurring additional lease fees, et cetera?
Uh, council has the option to table it. I don't know any of the implications on the lease fees. I believe that they were waiving some of January's lease fees. Yes, it's always council's option to table it, and if, if, if felt that there's a lack of information, then I would recommend table it, so until the information is brought back.
I am not sure if I did.
Yeah, I.
I'm worried that there was a two-week time limit. Some, does anybody else remember reading that?
Madam Mayor?
Okay, yeah.
Before we decide to table this, I, I wanna bring one important point, okay? I hope that makes sense to anybody to listen to this. If we had lots of hours throughout the time I can use it, so it become a very beat-up machine, let's say. So value will not worth 545,000 anymore. If you go out to the market to sell it. So why are we stuck with the, quoting us with the brand-new machine? So if I had to buy a brand new machine for 45,000, I want a brand-new machine. Right? Why should I buy a machine that only worth of less than 300,000 or 400,000 and pay them for a thousand dollars? Even they give you 30,000 dollars of, uh, of, uh, it's still not the best value. My whole point is, I'm not saying I'm against it to buy a, or have, uh, hydro back, uh, truck, but what I'm saying is all used. Why should we pay a brand-new price when? Why should we pay a brand new price when it's already used? You you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying.
So so I I want a brand new machine. Why should I pay you a used machine and it's beat up or used a lot? According to administration, use it every day. There's a lot of usage already, so the depreciation is huge in a heavy equipment. So why should we pay brand new price? That's my point. I just want you guys to think about that.
Okay, so when you're leasing a machine, we have got our lease price. But I can be very sure that in the contract, that any damages to that machine, if it's a beat up machine and they get it back, we will be billed for the thing. There's no difference that, you know, when we rent out a building and when there's damages over and above their lease, we charge them with the cost.
Let me rephrase my word. I shouldn't use damage. Appreciation. It's ain't depreciate in a way.
Uh, um, councillor.
Uh, councillor Valentino and then councillor Prue, who has logged back up.
Okay, uh, Deputy Mayor Lunnmar, next.
Okay, uh, first, I I too missed the community meetings, uh, but I'm very appreciative of this uh, uh, approval of that. Public Works has given us. And in reviewing it, I see that the they had an original price when we started to lease of it, which was brand new. We've had, our staff has had it for five months where we've paid twelve thousand five hundred a month for it. They are reducing our cost of purchase by that amount. In addition, uh, it that's it. They're they're reducing the price they're originally asking for this. Uh, that's why we're coming down to the three hundred and thirty-nine thousand for uh, sorry, that's the wrong number there. The the price has been reduced by that much, plus we have the FBI claim to purchase this, so that our staff can continue to use it. I I'm not uh, ever to to if we have to table it, but I know that we need this piece of equipment and our staff is familiar with it and I already know that they uh, they appreciate this truck more than the last one. It has the articulating arm and some of the feature that has assisted with some of the work that they do with it. Um, so it might be a favor of this, but I'm not sure how we're going with this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Valentino.
Uh. Thank you, Mayor Smook. Um, I'm gonna support this tonight. When I read the the notes through the tendering process, there was only one bid. So this is the bid to do it, and I just think that it's poor. It's I just don't like the idea of leasing every month. I mean, we're just throwing this money away every month and not and not owning anything. So um, I would like to see this move forward. I will support the purchase of it, and in the meantime, if we go through the process to buy it, can we still get the questions answered? Um, to appease those that have questions, but I see with only one bidder that I'm fine with supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Prue.
Um, yeah, it was already kind of answered, but um, that the in the notes that it was our, uh, sorry, RFQ is for a new or used hydro vac, and we've only had one bidder, so uh, that's all my comments.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor McMurdo.
Councillor McMurdo.
Uh, I I was just gonna say that I I I agree with what Kathy's saying there. If we can avoid tabling it with but ensure that that when we got that machine, the hours, the mileage were in fact what we're expecting with the new machine, then then that's okay with me.
Did I just hear councillors say we should proceed with purchasing this? With not knowing what state it's in? Did I hear that correctly? Ah, my, I won't be supporting this. Did I? That that was actually a question, not rhetorical. Is that what I heard? Is that we should go ahead and purchase it? I know what state it's in? How many miles are on it?
Um, we we've passed resolutions with caveats in the past, I would just add, so.
Councillor Prue as well, I think.
Hey, councillor Prue. Are you on mute?
Yeah, sorry, my hand was just, I forgot to bring it down.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Questions, concerns, comfortable?
Did I ask a reportable, didn't I?
Pardon?
Did I?
No, councillor Paul asked for a reportable.
Can I put a comment here? It is a top problematic. Number one, I thought it out. It, I remember the lease we had is a month to month. It's twelve thousand dollars plus tax. So let's say today, we decide to buy a new hydro bag machine. So this lease should be returned back because it's paid for new. They should send us a new one, not the one being used. And again, you guys is okay with that? To pay a new for the old machine, new price for the old machine, I don't care it. What's the logic of that? So I don't know. Uh, again, I don't have any info about if the same hour of the machine or mileage, what is this worth in the market right now? If it's only worth less than five thousand, why are we paying a five hundred forty-five? Even with the reduced rate, we don't have all this information.
Then somebody should make a motion to table.
I think we should, but if we not, we just look fool to agree with this right now.
Well, another one, another one, something we really need. Something we really need. You know, five hundred and seventy-five is insured value, that's insured. Value is like, we don't know. We got no, nobody here to answer, answer questions. You know, same thing. It's always come to, we gotta hurt, we gotta buy this, we gotta buy this. You know? I agree that we're going to buy new one, buy new. Right? Is uh, five hundred and seventy-five is that price? For a new machine? Then it comes down to fifty percent off of our our uh, our what we paid for the lease, the sixty thousand we lost, we got a thirty-six thousand dollar induction. From our lease, which is good, you know, not about the leasing companies would do that for people. So then it's five hundred and thirteen thousand. It was the money we got back from the quarter, from the insurance on the old truck. Brings it down to thirteen, 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 three hundred and thirteen thousand, I think it is. And then, uh, I want, my question is, is this all paid or during the venture?
It's paid by the utility.
By the utility. You know, we need a new, we need a vacuum truck, but you know, it's like.
Reserve.
Yeah, but like Joe's law says, it it it's beating their heads against the wall all the time. Take the bit, take the bit, take the bit, because we need. When we're not doing our due diligence and trying to save money for the people of Thompson. Right? Put in the bit. Um, government says we gotta do it. Right? And then we get one bit. It's crazy. We're getting paid, we're being charged too much all the time for this, and it all goes back to our taxpayers. Here's our one-third of our surplus this year, gone. Gone again, right? Because we never haven't done no due diligence. Thank you, Your Honor. I'll prob- I'll probably be supporting this because I know we need one.
Thank you. Uh, councillor.
I believe we have councillor McMurdo, councillor Ellsworth, and councillor Valentino.
Councillor McMurdo.
And also on councillor Prue.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. So just to be clear on my position, if if we can amend the resolution to ensure that um, when councillor, when the information of the hours and mileage of the machine is brought to our attention, if we're not satisfied with it, then we can terminate uh, the purchase at that point. Uh, if if that's not an option now, then I would uh, support or I I'd move to table this until we do have that information in front of us. Thanks.
If I could respond to that, Madam Mayor, um, that wouldn't be the proper way of doing it. It's either you pass the resolution now or table it and revisit it in a future time.
Okay, thanks, Anthony. Um, then I I I would move, uh, if anybody would like to support to table this until the next meeting in council. Uh, and and then we can get the the information that we've requested about the hours, the mileage um, on the machine when it showed up and the hours and mileage on the machine now. Even though I I think whether or not we got a a new machine five months ago or or and and used it for four months and got the price we would have been quoted five months ago, I don't really see us getting hosed in that deal. Um, especially in light of the fact that they're just counting the rental payments.
Thank you. Is there a second for that voter?
I'm second.
Uh, councillor Wong has put a second. All those in favor?
All right. All right.
All right.
Councillor Ellsworth, councillor Prue, and councillor McMurdo.
Okay.
You know.
It is passed, it is tabled. Next. Will be the thirty-first of January. Thank you. Point eight. Is the resolution the sole source to support the services? With the Foxborough.
You missed six point seven, Your Honor.
I'm on six point six, sorry.
You're right.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I apologize.
Okay. Resolution, the sole source, uh, the support and services agreement for the Foxborough operating system. Resolution two zero two two, zero zero seven. Oh, okay, I need a second for that motion. By Deputy Mayor, uh, Lunnmar, I need a second.
All right.
I'll second it.
Resolution two zero two two zero zero seven moved by Deputy Mayor Lunnmar. Seconded by councillor Prue. It resolved that councillor Prue's sole sourcing the support and service agreement for the water treatment plant. Foxborough Assistant to Schneider Electric for costs not to exceed thirty-four and two hundred and sixty-six dollars plus applicable taxes. Uh, what do administration?
Uh, yes, as is noted, this is a proprietary software that's used to run the water treatment plant. It's called Foxborough, made by Schneider. In past years, uh, council requested that we look into multi-year contracts. We brought that forward last year and saw that there was no cost advantage, and that's why it was only tendered again for one year. Um, understanding also that the software is starting to become old and likely in the next year or two will have to be replaced by its successor called Orchestra. So it's advantageous at this time to stick to the one-year contract as we work out the details of upgrading the software, uh, likely next year or the year after.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Lunnmar.
Yeah, uh, us, uh, our pressure from somebody else. I did go through the whole uh, agreement and everything. Except for, uh, we got a one-year deal. And they can help our staff of the facility.
Thank you. Other conskers, comments?
Councillor Ellsworth.
Councillor Ellsworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this is a no-brainer. It's a very important piece of equipment. I'm quite familiar in my past working with Foxborough, we needed to run the plant. There's a little bit of an increase, not much, but as the city manager stated, we'll probably have to update in the possibly in the next year. I would encourage the councillors to certainly support this. It's not something that we can put on hold. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm councillor Valentino. You know, your hand is up?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Mayor Smook. Um, I just think I'm gonna be supporting this too. Obviously, it's uh, something that we need, but if when we talk about knowing that we're gonna have to upgrade or change the the provider, if that's what you want to call it, can we start the process on learning about what the changeover would be or what the upgrade and some of the information we might need to start getting the information now instead of it being a last-minute changeover for next year? Thank you, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you.
And to that point, uh, worship, um, yes, we've already started working on that. That's something we can bring forward once it's ready to show to council. Um, some of the work even started a couple of years ago, once we were building the wastewater plant. The wastewater plant was built, the more updated software with the plan that the water plant would then be using the same software. Now there'd be the advantage of using the same software package at both plants.
Thank you. Okay. Any further questions? Seeing that, I'll hold for the question. All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Karen, thank you. Six point seven is a resolution to approve the alternate to the Valley Community Liaison Committee. Resolution two zero two two, zero zero eight, moved by Deputy Mayor Lunnmar, seconded by councillor Colburn. Whereas on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, council passed resolution number two zero two one, one eight two, appointing councillor McMurdo as an alternate to the Valley Community Liaison Committee. And whereas on December fourteenth, twenty twenty McMurdo asked that he is removed from the Valley Liaison Committee, now therefore be resolved that council appoint. And I have two names here, so we will have to decide which uh, one. Uh, Deputy Mayor Lunnmar or councillor Wong as the alternate to the Valley Liaison Committee. You want to do, yeah.
Uh, McMurdo has his hand up.
Councillor McMurdo.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Smook. Just really quickly, I I wanted to say that I I took that role and 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 initially thought as an hourly employee, uh, my objectivity would be ensured, but I've reconsidered and I just, I think it would be better served by another member of council. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, so councillor Lunnmar, councillor Wong, um, are you all still interested in it?
Yeah.
So do we have a vote, Tommy?
Well, with people attending on Zoom, you're gonna have to do a virtual hands.
Okay. Uh.
I'm I'm. I wish that councillor Ellsworth has a hand up.
Councillor Ellsworth.
Mayor Smook, it would, would it not, could we not just appoint both of them knowing that in the past, m- most of the councillors would go to to this meeting, so rather than going to a vote, I'm just asking why we couldn't just appoint both of them? I mean, I don't see a big deal.
I know in the past, we've all been invited, we can all go and have the stall family, but I'm going. I just wonder with the being that it's the alternate, we already have one appointed, does it?
Who's the main one again?
Yes, that's who I was on last year. Who's the, who's been appointed?
Let me look that up.
Okay.
And uh, Kathy, the councillor Valentino has her hand up when you're.
Councillor Valentino?
Yeah, similar to what Les was saying, I don't even think, I don't think we need to have an alternate because we all get the calendar invites to it. If we just identify whoever the first person is, and I think really all of councils and alternate. Um, it's always open, whoever wants to attend.
Tommy, councillor Ellsworth is the prime. Do we just, how do we have to reword this? How does Anthony, Tommy, can you guys? Give me some direction?
So if if I'm hearing right, council doesn't want to proceed with naming anyone, or you do? If you don't, then you could, uh, I suppose you could table it permanently. Or you could vote to kill it. Just table it.
Because we are, we are all invited. We all get the calendar invite in our calendars. So as long as we have councillor Ellsworth, and then if he can go, he reaches out to one of us, right?
Councillor Valentino has her hand raised.
I was just, uh, thank you, Mayor Smook. I was just gonna make the motion to table this permanently as we all get invited to it as an alternate.
Okay, go ahead. Does she have a second here? Deputy Mayor Lunnmar, in favor?
All right.
All right. All right.
All right.
You're not voting?
Oh, I agree.
Oh, what, you're for it? Okay. Okay, it's carried. Uh, this is permanently, oh, thank you. Six point eight. Is a resolution to ratify the board members to Thompson Public Library. Resolution zero two two, zero zero nine, moved by Counselor Fountain, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lundmark. It resolved that council ratified the board members to the Thompson Public Library Board for twenty twenty-two. Smook, Sue O'Brien, Kathy Nezio, Alicia Bedford, Geraldine Dixon, Carol Toronto, Andrew Connor. Uh, Anthony?
Uh, yes, it's requirement of the public libraries act that the, uh, board be appointed by resolution of council. So this is, it's really housekeeping. Council's already chosen their representative, and this has to be passed, uh, on behalf of the, uh, Thompson Public Library Board.
Thank you, Counselor Powell.
Uh, nothing, Madam Mayor. Best of luck to yourself and then the board. And, uh, I hope sincerely that the HVAC issues that they've been having there have been alleviated.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, thank you. When I was Counselor and sat on the board, I quite enjoyed it, and, uh, we moved forward in some direction, and we hope to continue again. Uh, call for the question. All those in favor?
All right.
All right. All right. All right.
Carrie. After going into bylaws. Bylaw seven point one is the second reading of bylaw two zero one six, two zero two one. Facility reserve bylaw. A resolution two zero two zero one zero was moved by Deputy Mayor Lundmark. I need a second here.
I'll second it.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yeah.
Resolution two zero two two, zero one zero, moved by Deputy Mayor Lundmark, seconded by Counselor Ellsworth. It resolved that bylaw two zero one six, two zero two one, being a bylaw to establish a reserve fund for the purpose of capital expenditures relating to the construction of an aquatic facility or significant upgrades. Repairs and maintenance to an aquatic facility be given a second. Administration?
Uh, yes, as noted, this is the second reading of the bylaw to create the reserve, uh, specifically for keeping dollars and spending dollars on aquatic facilities. Um, this is one way to garner support and for the people feel comfortable that when they donate their dollars, that those dollars are going specifically to that use, and it cannot be used for other uses. Um, the council gave first reading to this at the last meeting, and you have the opportunity this evening to give second and third reading, at which point that reserve will then be established.
Thank you. Did we receive any feedback or comments after the first reading?
Um, none, Your Worship.
Thank you. I'll next go to Deputy Mayor Lundmark.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's just another step towards an aquatic facility reserve or to a quiet facility. And, uh, like, uh, our manager said, our city manager said, uh, so that people can be assured that any funding or, uh, yes, that are, are going toward, that they're giving to the city towards an aquatic facility or spend on aquatic, so. For this, and I hope that we and, uh, show some more progress.
Thank you. Any other roundup?
Counselor Valentino and then Counselor Ellsworth.
Okay, Counselor Valentino?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smook. Yeah, I think that, just to, to explain a little bit, so right now, if there's a fundraising, a fundraiser for an aquatic facility, or there's already money that we have set aside, it's just sitting in a trust account. And by creating a reserve, it makes us be far more transparent to the public, um, through the process. So all it does is it, it makes the, the dollars more transparent that are there. And it gives more security to those who want to donate money, um, for, for personal or specific reasons. Because when you have a reserve to spend that money outside of the purpose, it would have to be through bylaw or through a public hearing. So it's just the, the proper way of starting to handle a donation and fundraising dollars. So definitely be supporting it as from the, the first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, understanding of the process after the mover of, uh, spoken, then the signer would speak, but no doubt, I will go ahead and speak. The last part of the resolution, I want you to read it again if you can, so that there's no doubt that it, I believe it said a, a facility act with it. Facility or, can you read that last piece so we're clear what we're establishing?
It's a short resolution, I'll read it all, sir. Be it resolved that bylaw two zero one six dash two zero two one, being a bylaw to establish a reserve fund for the purpose of capital expenditure expenditures relating to the construction of aquatic facility or significant upgrades, repairs, maintenance to an aquatic facility be given the second reading.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, and I'll certainly support it. I just wanted to be, make sure everyone was clear that it's a holding, it's a reserve, it's to put money in, whether we build a new one or we upgrade the old one. So I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Wong? Oh, just a minute, yeah, that's all I have on Zoom. Counselor Wong first.
Can I go first?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just a question to administration. I have, just a question about this, uh, reserve. So let's say we didn't, we don't get the grant for new, or, or we're not interested, we all, the whole be destroyed. Not repairable. So what happened to this funding? Have you?
As Counselor Valentino noted, it is in a reserve for a specific use, and if council wants to use it for something else, you then probably have to have a public hearing to let the committee or community know why you're spending that reserve dollars or moving it outside of its intended use. So at the end of the day, council does have, uh, the ability to use it for different things. Uh, but it would require a higher level of transparency as to why you're moving dollars around from what they're intended for to some other use. Just think.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Carrie. So seeing so we have no, um, objections or anything, we can continue with the third reading tonight. The third reading is always, uh, a recorded vote. Oh, seven point two is a third reading of bylaw two zero one six, two zero two one. The resolution two zero two two, zero one one is moved by Deputy Mayor Lundmark. I need a second here. Counselor, uh, thank you. Resolution two zero two two, zero one one, moved by Deputy Mayor Lundmark, seconded by Counselor Fountain. It resolved that bylaw two zero one six, two zero two one, be given third and final reading, and that it do now pass. Administration?
Uh, nothing further.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you.
Counselor Wong? No question?
No, no, I have nothing.
Uh, Counselor Colburn?
Okay, uh, we, we approve, as I'm supporting this, if we approve it, do that mean when the bills are paid for this last fundraiser? Are paid, have we got to prove that money?
It goes directly to this account.
Those that, so any bills that's paid from this account has got to be approved by council.
Make it a certain dollar figure, but I'll go to Anthony.
Right, you know, you said that bills got to be paid. Yeah, bills got to be paid, but, uh, if we establish a reserve for money and then council, so to move that money around for pay bills, you, you must come to a resolution, wouldn't it?
Allocation of dollars from the reserve will require council's approval.
So, so when we had like that money, we got there now, when we approved this tonight, that money goes in there.
Yes.
Right? Then you, but there's outstanding bills that we pay. So that's got to come before it comes, right? Yeah, okay, thank you.
No, to clarify, I believe some of the fundraising was done by a third-party committee. If they're paying their bills or then making the donation after the fact. I believe it was the Winter Wonderland Committee. So that's something finance would sort out.
What he's saying is that the Winter Wonderland Committee is outside of the city hall. So if they pay their bills with the Winter Wonderland, then they may just take the one chunk of Winter Wonderland money and put it there. It witnessed the bottom reserve.
But there's a chunk of money there right now. Sitting waiting to go in there.
Yes.
From this year.
There is the money from last year.
And we establish this reserve tonight.
Yeah.
That money goes in there.
Yes.
You did, so uh, you can't pay the bills unless we approve it, if that money goes in there right now.
Okay, but what he's saying is
I know what he's saying.
Winter Wonderland money might, might still be with the Winter Wonderland Committee. Which is outside.
I know he's saying that.
So that money hasn't possibly come into us yet. Now whether it comes in before they pay the bills and we pay them through the city, or they pay their bills and then they make the big lump donations to the city. The last, or the city was in charge, and when the money come in, and then it went out. Because I know, uh, we saw the bills went out to some of the.
They, they were doing it that way. What are we creating a reserve? We, we got our staff on that one, remember? You know, council, council. And now we got no say in where our money is spent, but you want to create a reserve?
Anything that goes into the, into the reason will have to be, go before council, but it comes out. What we're saying is this last month's money may not have been collected like into a jet. It may not be in the city's coffers, it could still be with.
When did it close?
Hey?
When did it close?
It closed at the beginning of the month.
We said we're two weeks in and.
Yeah, so they may have had bills to come out of it, like, get bills that, that, get down the meter.
You know, all tears, yeah.
Anyway, I'm sure it'll be all part of doing, but you'll get.
I asked specifically, that that money that we collected this year goes in the, this reserve tomorrow.
If, if it's, if it's been handed to the city, it will. All right, so I don't know if it's been handed to the city, if it's in an account in the city yet.
Thank you.
Okay, I, Casper?
Oh, uh, Counselor McMurdo has had a.
Counselor McMurdo?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I will certainly support this, uh, bylaw, and I, I, I think it's a, a good vehicle to, uh, to move this forward and ensure that the citizens of Thompson get, get a pool. And it leaves the door open for, for that to be a pool of a new design or retrofit of the Norplex. And, and yeah, hopefully this is a domino that, that starts to get the ball rolling downhill because as, you know, our residents know that with, you know, weeks and months of thirty, thirty-five below, some indoor recreational opportunities are, are sorely missed and needed, so I'll be supporting. Thanks.
Do you have any other, Counselor? Pardon? Uh, seeing with that, in a recorded vote, uh, I'll ask for the question. All those in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Bye.
Counselor Colburn, Deputy Mayor Lundmark, Mayor Smook, Counselor Wong, Counselor Fountain, Counselor Ellsworth, Counselor Valentino, Counselor Crew, and Counselor McMurdo. It is careful. Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, just for my closing remarks, I would like to say that, uh, with, uh, the Omicron, uh, virus, that everybody please, uh, take your needed precautions, stay home, uh, when you can. Uh, if you do have symptoms and do feel sick, uh, please, uh, report in. Uh, I heard today that you can pick up a couple, um, test kits at the Burnwood Health Authority. You can get your, pick up a couple rapid test kits per, not just per person or per family, but they are available. And, uh, like I said, the, the main thing is, uh, it is affecting a lot of businesses, city included, with people having to stay home. And, uh, when they've been in contact, so, uh, Zoom is going to be our friend again for a while, so I'd like to, everybody to be careful in this cold weather, it's, uh, up and down, so, uh, thank you, have a great two weeks, and I'll see Counselors author. Okay, call for adjournment? Deputy Mayor? Colburn, all in favor?
All right.
Adjourned, thank you.